You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 16th, 2023 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Residential Rental Workshop. You can find more information for this workshop by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
All right. Thank you guys for showing up to the workshop for the ordinance here. I'm the sponsor of Resident Rental Registration. This program here is not talking about inspections or anything like that. This is just a residential rental registration. And I'll go over some of the high points here. I'm really gonna kind of just walk through the ordinance. I am not going to talk about the whereas and things like that. When you're looking at our ordinances, when you get to the now therefore to be it ordained, that's when the actual law starts to kick in. And so I'll go through some of the high points and some of the questions that I've been hearing, moving, you know, talking about this ordinance. So right away, I want to talk about, you know, some of the definitions. You know, we know what the city means a department who will be Michigan City Department of Planning and Inspection when you hear us refer to or hit me refer to department. That's what we'll be talking about. And then rental unit community means pursuant and it gives the IC thirty six dash one dash twenty dash one point two. One or more parcels of contiguous real property of which are located, one structure containing rental units. So if you have a building of units, different units in there, you would have to do the registration for the one. Because all of the the units are actually in that building. Right? And then I'm going to get to something else. And when we get to when we start to talk about the financial penalties and how that all works. We had noticed in here, you know, we have ample timing for you. If you do not make the registration deadline date, you will be notified first of the violation to designate by US mail or electronic mail. And then you have thirty days to register or re-register whatever it may be. Because you'll get a notice of the violation. So you have thirty days to clean that up. And then, you know, if there's a failure of the violation to be cured within the time, that's when any penalties would kick in. So even if you, let's just say you were out of town or you were gone or whatever it may be. You still have ample time because we will notify somebody that they need to get in here and register. Okay. So moving on. The way this works in regards to, let's get right down to it, what everybody wants to know. A rental, the rental registration fee. So if you have two houses, that would be ten dollars. And these registrations will last for five years. That's when you would have to re-up the registration in five years. So you'd have ten dollars and then you'd have to re-up in five years. And then the penalties and fees, I'm going to skip down to that for the residential rental registration. If someone fails to register and they do not meet those three criteria that I said earlier, after you get a notice that, you know, you weren't registered and you had time to fix it, thirty days to fix it, then that could bring on a five hundred dollar failure to registration fee. And then a failure to renew, let's say there was a change of property owner or something to that sort, then they would need to do the five dollar registration because it would be under new ownership. And you have thirty days to do that. And then you'll still be notified if you didn't make the thirty day registration, you'd be notified by the department and everything like that. So you would still have a chance to do it. But if someone fails after all of the warnings and all of the reaching out to by the department here, that would be a two hundred and fifty dollar fee there. And, you know, these fees are pretty hefty, but once again, put into this ordinance, there are lots of chances, lots of warning from the department to let you know. So I wouldn't understand why somebody would get a five hundred dollar fee or two hundred and fifty dollar fee with all of the notification that you would get from the city. Moving down, and people then want to know, well, what is this money for? What's the money for? I've heard people talking about city wants to get rich off of the backs of landlords and things like that. So that's not what we're doing. The money that comes from this five dollar for five years rental registration is going to go into a fund. I'll take my glasses off to read this, but it's called a non-reverting fund. And I'll give a little bit of government, Michigan City government here, a non-reverting fund as money comes into that fund. And at the end of the year, the money stays in that fund. It does not revert back to the general fund. So we'll not be collecting these dollars in order to go back into the general fund to help pay for salaries, police cars or anything else like that. It stays in what's called a non-reverting fund. But these funds could be dedicated or would be dedicated solely to reimbursing costs actually incurred by the city relating to the imposition in the amount of the fee. So gas and things like that, with the people going out, so that'd be costs incurred by the city. So that's what those funds will be used for from the five dollar registration fee. Now I ran through this pretty quickly. With the ordinance here, I mean, it really is, you know, not very complicated to read. I'll go over some other things here. I'll talk and I highlighted some things, so I'll read some of these. Okay, residential registration program established. Per IC thirty six dash one dash twenty dash five, the registration fee imposed, we talked about that, that's five dollars. Covers all the rental units and the rental unit community. I talked about a rental community. If you had one building with different units, that'd be five dollars for the whole thing. However, if a rental if a rental unit is not part of a rental unit community, that means one house, two houses, three houses. The registration fee may be imposed for each separate real property rental unit. So that'd be if you had three houses, that'd be fifteen bucks. And as I mentioned, the registration is valid for five years. That's when somebody would be up for renewal. You'd have to renew that in five years. The owner may register multiple parcels of real estate utilized, but you know, as a rental units. But if you have over twenty, because that'd be five dollars, be twenty of them will make a hundred dollars. If you have twenty one, you would not incur a cost of over one hundred dollars. So if you have thirty, you know, that would still stop at one hundred dollars as if you had twenty. All of them would need to be registered, but the cost would not go over one hundred dollars. Okay? This is what will be required on the form that we're going to have in order to register your, 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 your property. The name, full legal name, post office address, the email address and telephone number of each owner. If an individual corporation, partnership, limited liability company or other form of business entity. And if a unit of local state or federal government, you need the name, post office address, email address and telephone number of its chief executive officer or other official responsible for the operation of the residential rental building. We want somebody that we can get in touch with. You know, if it is a, like we said, a LLC or something like that, we still want a name of somebody we can get in touch with if something happens and we need to get in touch with. Then also full legal name, post office address, email address, work telephone number, emergency contact number and any work cellular phone number of the property agent. Some people may have property managers. So we'll need to know that information or any other persons or business entity under whose management or supervision of the residential rental building or the owner of the owner will be operated. So if you have a property manager, we want to know who that is so we can get in contact with them as well. And the address of the agent must be within seventy five miles of Michigan City. And the reason we want that is we want somebody close in case we need something addressed here in Michigan City. All right, the address of each rental or residential rental building owned by the owner named in the registration and then it says a brief description of type and number of rental units. I may waffle a little bit on that, but I think a brief description would not be such a bad thing to have. I'm going to think about that one and I may strike that from the ordinance at some point. Then in the event of change of ownership, let's say I own the building, I own a house, I sold it. Now there's a new owner to that. That person must come and then re-register five years, five dollars. In that one, I talked about the fee there. If somebody, you know, buys a home, there's change of ownership, that could be two hundred and fifty dollars. But once again, that person would still get all of the information that would come from the city, letting them know to register. You have thirty days to clear that up and so forth. So that would not just happen instantaneously. That would then be both time between, you know, somebody incurring a fee. Failure to register as required by the division is a violation and it talks about the different fines and I've already gone over the fines. So I think I've covered pretty much everything that I wanted to talk about and give you information about. But there's something in the orders that some of you are probably reading as well. It talks about the dates. It says beginning October first, two thousand and twenty three. And the reason those dates are still in there is because when this was initially taken up, it was a long time ago. And now it's come forward to the, to the point where now, I mean, we're almost we're past, you know, these, these dates moving, moving forward. So these dates will be changed definitely in order to give you once again, more time to be able to handle this. I'm not going to expect somebody to turn this thing around in a week, flood the department with registration and everything like that. We have some things on our end. We'll still need to get in place. So it will not be something where I'll make it unfair in terms of time for you to take care of this. You know, like I said, we're not trying to get rich as a city. We're just trying to get some, some registrations of rentals. And some of the examples of why I feel we need to do these things. Let's just say there, you know, we, we have a rental property there, multiple shooting calls have come from the neighborhood over and over and over. The police are out at a, a certain home. We want to know, or we want to know who we can contact to tell them, you know, this is the fifth shooting, you know, that we've had reported out of this home. So we would contact the owner for you to be able to do something. We don't feel like that's the renters priority. I'm sure they're going to make the calls to the police and everything like that. Or people around there, but we want to be able to reach out to the person that owns the property. Place catches on fire. We want to be able to reach out to the property manager, the property owner, whoever it may be. Thus another reason for the rental registration. And, you know, everything like that has to do with police calls. That's really big in terms of police calls that may happen to certain properties. We really want to know who we need to reach out to, to be able to address these issues. And I would think as a property owner, you want to know if there are multiple shooting calls that are coming into your rental properties. So that is the, the crux of what we're trying to do. This is not trying to be predictive to landlords. This is a registration. Because we want our police fire and everybody to be able to contact somebody in case of an emergency. We want somebody that is close, that can come and handle issues if we have issues. So I will leave the floor unless there are any comments from anybody up here that wants to jump in on that to talk about some of the things and if they felt like I missed anything.
Yeah, I have a question. Who in the inspection department is going to administer this program and keep track of it? Who's going to be, who's assigned to that?
Probably the administrative assistant.
Pardon?
The administrative assistant.
Okay.
Anybody else on the, up here have a question or comments? Okay, now I'll open up to the public for any questions. And once again, if you don't have a copy of the ordinance, I have a, a legal pad, pad down here that you can put your email address and I will email it to you if you. Okay. I think they're all gone. Yeah, they're all handed out, but if you want to put your email address down here, I'll get one to you. Okay?
My name's Alicia Ortiz and I just, I have some questions and some kind of like cleanup stuff. You have in section twenty two eight oh two D, the rental unit definition. So if you have an owner in a three or four unit, how is that going to be affected? I think a lot of this stuff needs to be.
One house with four apartment. One, one registration.
Yeah, but one would be the owner. It would be an owner.
You would still have to register and, and some of the reasons being what happens to the owners out of town or out of the country. What happens to the owner is deceased. We've had that even though, you know, owner occupant, it could be owners in the hospital. We still need that kind of information as far as who to contact, you know, and I get it if the owner is out of town, I mean, the owner's out of town.
Right, but the owner could be out of town and owner of a regular single family house.
Okay, but.
But I, I just, I, these are just questions that I have. And my other thing in regards to definition of a rental unit. How does assisted living, halfway houses and residents like opportunity enterprise fit into that? Because they're all rentals also.
I don't consider a halfway house. Sorry, I didn't consider a halfway house a rental. But I don't see that where that one would qualify. That's not, they're, they're not renting.
Most of them are.
They're also registered as a business. They're a five oh one C three charity or something like that with the state. And they're also registered with us as well. And they get inspected by, by the fire marshal and you inspect them as well.
And that goes for assisted living and everything also that's in a private house. I'm not talking about a established.
No, the assisted living are not registered with us. No, like, like Silver Birch, they don't register with us now.
Right, exactly. But if I have a home that I'm renting to assisted living people, then does that need to be registered? It does not. It doesn't specify in this thing. I'm just asking. And, and then on twenty two eight oh three, section A.
Hold on a second. I'm writing that down, what you just said.
Okay.
A single home that you would be renting to someone for assisted living.
Yes.
Because I want to ask. Yeah. We're covered there, you think? Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. In section twenty two eight oh three, it says, I know you were changing the dates, but it says, end January thirty first of each year thereafter and pay the registration fee established. So that should, that should be changed in my opinion to five years. Because right underneath that, it says valid for five years where A says it has to be registered every year.
So I think we have it saying that because new people come in every year with new rentals and stuff like that. They still have to register on, you know, the once a year for the five years.
Right, but it doesn't say that. That's what I'm saying. It says it has to be renewed every year.
Okay.
Valid point.
And then, um, failure to renew the registration as of January thirty first of each calendar year is a violation and that's in C at the top of page three.
There it is. Are you going to renew the registration as in January? And once again, we're using January thirty first in this, but if this doesn't come online until later, like I said, these, these dates
Right.
can be changed.
I understand, but it says each calendar, you have to renew in the registration each calendar year. And it should be each five years or however.
Every five years.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
I, I get your point, but some people are going to register in twenty twenty three, some are going to register twenty twenty four, some that's really just giving you the deadline every five years.
Right, right. So it's not a every year thing.
It's, it's not every year, but.
It's that's what it says.
Right.
Because you'll know.
The, the point they're trying to make there is it has to be done by January thirty first. That's the whole point of that statement.
Well, that's going to change and it's not.
And what do you recommend? What do you recommend we would change it to?
My quick twist is it's not a yearly registration. It's a five year registration. So I don't care if you buy a house five years from now and you register it. You don't have to renew it every year. You just have to renew it every five years.
Right.
And this doesn't say that.
So, so what do you recommend we would put in there to make sure everybody knows that they have to do it by January thirty first of the, their fifth year? How, how would you recommend we word it to, to make it more clear?
Put the five years in there. Is it right now? It says the renew the registration.
That's not a lot. That's just the interns.
And, and that's exactly why I write notes in order to make that change.
I, I mean, that's that's all I have. It's just clean up some.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gerald Mitchell. Gerald Mitchell, eleven oh seven North Whiskey Trail. After the five years registration, will the registration fee increase?
The registration is set in the ordinance is going to be five dollars. It's going to continue to be five dollars unless the state could somehow make changes, but we're going with five, five dollars. After five years, you would register again, five bucks.
Be in charge of all that we know, the administration assistant.
Hey Brian, why don't you, can you come, Mr. Mitchell, can you come down front? Thank you, sir. And maybe that microphone is not working.
Drew said he was okay.
Okay, now you're saying that the administrative assistant will be in charge of all the renewals.
It'd be the same way how she handles permits and other short term rental applications and stuff like that. It comes in. It gets processed the same way, gets emailed to everybody and you know, after five years, the computer says, so I'll probably notify her of the five year lapse or, you know, it's coming to to a, you know, just like she notifies you for electrical license and everything else. She gives you like a three month leeway. Usually by October, she's letting you know November. This way you renew by, you know, January first for your electrical license.
Okay. I've had problems coming in with her making change. And I don't even think she'll have time to do this if she can't change a twenty dollar bill. I think that's ridiculous. If you accept cash and you can't make change.
We, we, we don't have an infinite amount. It says right on the, right on the front, we don't accept hundred dollar, it's nothing more than a twenty dollar bill.
I've came in with five dollars over and she would give you five bucks back.
So he don't even accept our payments. She don't even accept our payment. She say wait till Sue get in and then she'll let Sue take it.
Right.
The payment.
Yeah, no, it's just, you, you guys are, you guys are, you're mixing two things up here. Your, your, your permit fees, you, you can't you, you can't bring the permit fees in here because yes, I do review the permits. If that's what you're referring to, as Carrie says, I have to review it, then yes, I have to review.
Well, we used to be able to fill out an application and we get, we pay it right on the spot and it's done deal. Instead of, we have to wait till Sue look at.
Right. That's, that, that's permits. That's has nothing to do with the ordinance.
Well, no, it doesn't have nothing to do. But I'm afraid if I come in there with a twenty dollar bill, she won't be able to make change.
You can't make change of your hundred dollar bills. She can make change of your twenty dollar bills.
Well, you was just there when my bill was like one twenty five or something and I had one thirty. And I had to come up with the other make the change for the one twenty five or whatever.
The only thing.
Keep it there then. And I got lucky and had it.
Your hundred dollar bills. She can't make change for a hundred dollar bills. She just can't.
Okay, so anything under a hundred dollars, she should be able to make change.
Sign says twenty. Nothing larger than a twenty dollar bill. And that's actually fairly common in a lot of places. You see signs like that all over everywhere that says nothing more than a twenty dollar bill will be accepted. That's, that's pretty common.
But his point, his point was making, that he was making was that when we go in the, how is she going to handle that if she can't handle?
She could make change for a twenty dollar bill.
Being that we're in the twenty first century, there's debit cards, there's checks, there's, there's
And not only that.
Different ways of payment. Why are we making payments?
Mr. Dabney, Mr. Dabney, uh, this question is for you. I heard you say, uh, went on in, in exchange for when, when we sell a property and the new owner has to pay a registration fee of two hundred and fifty dollars.
No, I did not say that. I, I said, when change of ownership happens, that person would have to come in here and register five dollars.
Okay.
If they don't register after the change, right? And they're notified via email or email and, and reached out to and they have thirty days to get that straight now, then eventually it can turn into a two hundred and fifty dollar penalty for not changing the registration, but it's five dollars.
Okay, I, I think that's a little excessive, but after that five dollars he ended five dollars years over, it, it expires. What do we do? Just come and re-register again? Or is there anything or requirements that we have to meet?
And it'll be five dollar.
Just five dollars.
Just five dollars for renew.
Well, I wasn't here in the beginning, but I, that's what you had said.
Yeah.
Forgive me.
No problem. That's what we're here to clean, to clear this up, man. So that's not a problem at all. Thanks for the question.
I'm Bob Bellamy. You said the reason we need this registration is for the police and the fire department mostly. I had just remodeled and redone a complete house. He got shot up, thirty five bullet holes in it. I never got a call from the police department. They know who it belongs to. You know who it belongs to. It was Reverend Bogdan's old house. When I went to the police department and tried to get the police report for my insurance companies, they wouldn't give me one. They said it's still under investigation. Two weeks later, I had another house that got shot up on the east side. Same deal. Nobody contacts me from the police department. Can't get a police report. Still to this day, and that's been a couple of years, still to this day, no police report for my insurance company. They told me, have your insurance company call us. We'll tell them what happened. Absolutely ridiculous. So as far as I'm concerned, your excuse for having this for the police departments is out the window. Your excuse for having this for the police departments is out the window. The fire department? I'm already registered with them. If I have a fire, they should call me.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Yes, please come down to the microphone, please. We we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Okay. Microphone so it could record when we.
Hmm?
Yes.
I just have an odd question because you you limit the total amount of rentals to twenty units at a hundred dollars. Right?
Keep going.
Okay. So why not just every unit, no matter how many a person owns? Because if someone has thirty units.
Mm hmm.
They're only gonna register twenty of them at a hundred dollars?
No, no, no. If you, let's just say you have a hundred. You're gonna register all one hundred. But the maximum amount that we can charge you would would be a hundred dollars. You wouldn't, you would not go over one hundred dollars. So if you had thirty properties, if you you had forty, fifty, you wanna register all fifty. But the maximum that we can charge you stops at one hundred dollars.
So that's like a law for the hundred dollars?
That is uh what's put into part B right there. I can read it.
Yeah, I was just wondering why you just didn't charge them for every single one of them.
And charge it for every single one up to twenty, which will get to a hundred. But if you couldn't thirty, then, you know, we we're just gonna stop at a hundred dollars because. We don't want to have somebody that, let's just say they have, this is kind of wild, but it's an example. Let's just say they have three hundred. And if we continue to charge five dollars, that mean that can be, you know, a lot of cost. So we're just gonna stop it at one hundred. So if you have about twenty, you'll only be charged a hundred.
But they've also got all that money coming in from renters too. They can afford the five dollars for each unit.
And to be to be, I really don't wanna try to speak about somebody else's pockets. At this point, but the the cost, if you have over a hundred dollars in total charge is the most that we, the maximum that we can charge will be one hundred dollars.
Where to start? Scott Mellon. I think the whole thing should be scrapped. I think this is governmental overreach. The previous common council meeting. It was said, we don't want to interfere in private businesses. Give me five minutes and an address and I can tell you who owns it. This is public information.
If it's an LLC?
This won't get around that. You'll get sued and say I'm an LLC for a reason. I can give you my registered agent's number. There you go. One of your whereas is here. The city reasonably believes the need exists to establish a restful rental registration program to ensure the rental units and communities are meeting minimum property standards for occupancy. So what does that mean? That's a back door to inspections. We already know. And why does it matter if you can't make change? Because our bills say. Good for all all, this note is good for all debts. Private and so forth. I already lost my wallet. But that's what it says. That's why you have to be able to make change. We shouldn't have to come to your office twice. To drop off a permit and then come back to pay the fee. That's why. You serve us. The things I wrote down before I came here is less government interference. What is the purpose of this? To identify property owners, apparently. There are easier ways to do that than another administrative burden. With an. Overtax department and some administrative assistant. Who's gonna maintain this database? Who's gonna enforce compliance? This is a slippery slope. It's unnecessary. Five mi- five dollars is de minimis. Capping the fees at a hundred, I understand. You're not doing it as a moneymaker. But the whole thing is unnecessary. I've been a landlord for over twenty five years, not in this city. So I don't have a, I don't have a horse in this in this race. But I care about free market capitalism. Okay? And I don't like governmental overreach. And I don't like departments that are already a problem to deal with, having one more thing to create problems with. In five years, somebody's gonna tell me that my registration is due. This isn't even gonna be enforced in five years. This is gonna be forgotten about, like so many things. What is the need? What's the goal of this? Who's to administer it? Who's gonna investigate compliance, investigate penalties and maintain the database? And what is the experience of other larger cities that find this not necessary? The city of Chicago, for example, doesn't require this. You know all they ask for? A placard on the building giving identifying information and a contact number. We don't need an ordinance. We don't need fees. Or maybe the ordinance says you put a placard on the building, so we have a number to contact. We don't need all this.
Would that be, would would that be a reg- a form of a registration, a placard on the building?
No, that's not. That's a sign.
Yeah, but. Then we could just drive around and collect it and put them in a database. That would be a registration.
That's on you.
If I'm not mistaken.
Doesn't make us go to the office. Doesn't, they don't have to make change this way.
Got it.
I find it unnecessary, unneeded, and I think it creates an administrative burden that doesn't serve a purpose. You might have a good goal in mind. But any responsible landlord, and that's not your target, is gonna know if their building catches on fire. Most landlords don't want shootings taking place on their property. It's not in their interest anyway. And does the landlord or the building shoot the gun or is it the people? Which is a police problem, not a landlord problem. So let's get the focus on the right thing. I think the whole thing should be scrapped, and I don't want that department have anything to do with it. Thank you.
Hi, George uh Lagan. Um I just had one quick question. Do we still have to register with the fire department then? Or will this then take? Take care of that part of it? You you're all gonna share this.
I I we're gonna share the information. It would not be necessary.
Then we, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And if all else fails, I could probably take the registrations and put them into a Google Doc and share it with the fire department and. So everybody can see the same document. So that's pretty much what we're looking at. You know, every department will have the 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 same information. It will be able to see the same information. Just makes it more efficient for us as well.
Eric Pierman. Eric Pierman. Uh I just did a registration with Sue just several weeks ago. And I I don't know how that was administered. I I did it with her department. Actually, I had a conversation with her. Uh but there, I don't believe there was a fee on that, if if I remember correctly. Um and I don't know if that was the program that. Uh i- is run back through the fire department or if that's the beginning of this. And I I'm not, I don't have complete clarity on on what I need to do if I've already done a recent registration in that department.
It was a new business registration and there is no fee for that. And yes, that information, actually, that information is shared with. The fire department, the police department, the uh water department, to say, all all the departments get it. It's just gets sent to everyone.
Does that, what what we did just a few weeks ago, does that check the box for this or is that a separate?
Not. That would be separate because that didn't regi- that registered you as your business. It did not register your units.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? And that. Okay.
Mr. Dabney, you just said that you could share this information with the fire department and all other places that needs to be shared with. Why don't you just go to the fire department and get their list? And then you'll have everybody's list that's already registered. And then you can share it with whoever you want.
I'll address that one. Uh we do share with the fire department. If I contact them, they will give me that information, but their. Their registration contains about twenty five percent of what. Uh uh of the units that are actually in here. We're hoping that our registration will contain all of those units, and if it goes into the New World system. Everybody has access to that information. Where right now, the fire department's information is on a spreadsheet on somebody's desktop. And if she's on vacation, you're gonna wait for her to come back to get that information. Okay, well, well, we're we're working on it, but everyone's not registering with the fire department and it doesn't go into New World. We're trying to solve that problem by by this right here. Then everyone will have that information.
They have to do a better job.
Get into that one.
Since there's been so, a little short teeth, since there's been so many questions, I think cleaning up language. Also in the new owner has to register instead because it doesn't say specifically new or previous. So I I think cleaning that up in regards to signs on buildings. Especially in Chicago, there's been several, several landlords. That are no longer here because they had signs and people could track them. One lady was just, they found her in ten different parts in her freezer. So it's it's definitely a danger for landlords to have all their information on there. Yeah. A tenant did that.
I believe it was the owner occupied rental too.
But it's, that's not the only where there, it's been different cities across the the country.
Any other public comment? Because here is the the plan moving forward with this. As I spoke earlier, the dates. Because this was the started a long time ago. So now, you know, it talks about the registration dates and it's saying October first. Which is obviously unreasonable. These are things that are gonna have to be moved out to make it fair in order for people to register. So I don't plan on. You know, making this thing happen where you have to run in here, we live in the week. These are things that are gonna have to be changed. So at tomorrow night's council meeting. I am going to table. Uh the ordinance because I have to fix those dates. I can't just come up with them in thin air and throw them on this this piece of paper. This, and then she made some good points about clearing up some of the language that she thought was. Uh not clear, and somebody else made a comment about things not being clear, which have to be addressed, and this is why I wanted you here. Um you know, we can write something or somebody else can write something and they feel it's clear to them, but it's not clear to you. So that's why I took notes on it and I will get that to uh our attorneys to make sure they see that and try to clear that that up. Uh so thank you for that, you know, Clint trying to clear up anything that that just doesn't read right to you. Uh so we are gonna do that. So that is the plan moving forward. It is gonna be on the uh agenda because I tabled it. Until uh our next meeting, which is tomorrow night. But I plan to table it definitely to take care of some of these issues. Uh that we have, especially the dates, because those have to be moved back to give you all time uh to be able to ingest this and move forward with it. So then I have any questions, what we're doing going forward?
You already, Scott Mellon again. You already know how I feel about it in general. But you're asking for too much information. If somebody has an LLC, there's a reason for that. You have a right to ask for a registered agent and a contact number, but not the actual owner, not their address, not their phone number. A registered owner is all anybody gets. There's a reason for LLCs, there's a reason for trusts, there's privacy concerns. Having all that other stuff is governmental overreach and doesn't serve the need. You need a contact number for the property. That's your stated reason.
Mm hmm.
Keep it simple.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I'll just read the statement again. We need the full legal name, post office address, email address and telephone number of each owner of an individual corporation, partnership, limited liability company. Or the former business entity. And if a unit of local, state or federal government, you know, we want the name. Post office address, email address and telephone number of its chief executive officer or other official responsible. Um uh for operation of the resident's building. So that's what we were planning on doing.
You know, I have one more question. But we pay so much money in taxes uh a year. And. For us to give you a contact number. A payment up to a hundred bucks. For a contact number, I feel that's unnecessary too. I I feel like the gentleman down up front. I think we pay enough taxes a year for that should be covered. That should cover us, especially the ones who do have over twenty plus.
I'm sorry, there's one last thing. It's a double registration. Why do you make the people do the same thing twice?
Uh could you answer my question though? My 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 question. When that burden of tax that we have every year. Uh. That should be able, that should uh. Be enough to cover that registration fee. I I I'm asking you that question, wouldn't you think so?
And it's a double registration. You're asking us to do the same thing twice. That's like the, that's the cops that can't shoot straight.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dabney?
Yeah, yeah, I'm 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 trying to.
Process that and and answer your question and and be. I don't wanna say.
It's almost like we're we're paying, we're paying taxes, we're paying the city to do their job. Twice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And in my mind, I do not see five dollars as something punitive. Uh to be the the registration and, you know.
It's five dollars today, Mr. Dabney.
And it and it says it would remain five dollars. It actually says that.
But it is five dollars today. And it, we know that things change. Once we begin this, it can get out of hand.
Yeah. Once again, I don't wanna s- speak about your money and and what you pay in taxes. Um but like I said, you know, in my. Humble opinion, I don't think that a five dollar registration is. You know, that's not punitive in the least bit. And we talked about, you know, what the five dollars would actually do, pay for the cost of people to administer the program and so forth, so.
You couldn't answer. All you could say is you don't think, you don't think it's. So that's a question that you're not ready to answer.
And ask me that question. Let me let me get at this again. Please, please restate that question.
I said, shouldn't the taxes that we pay. Yearly.
Mm hmm.
Should cover a five dollar charge of registration fee? For every five years that you're asking us to register.
Five dollars.
And but we're paying thousands and thousands of dollars tax a year.
Mm hmm.
Thousands of dollars.
And property taxes, is that what you're referring to? Your property taxes? Property taxes going to the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And this five dollar registration fee is gonna go into a fund specifically, a non-reverting fund specifically for administering this program.
Well, the city, it it goes to the city. Our taxes is.
The general fund.
Distributed throughout the city, the tax.
Mm hmm.
Uh the property taxes that we pay. So it should cover the five dollar registration fee. Wouldn't you think so? You're, on one hand, you're telling me five dollars isn't a nu- isn't nothing.
Right, right, uh.
You're saying five dollars isn't nothing. We didn't pay. Well, we I'll put that question back to the city. Five dollars shouldn't be nothing for it to uh. Be charged to the city. Be charged to the city, I mean, take it out from the, uh, taxes that we pay.
And I will state again, your pri- your, uh, property taxes goes into our general fund. The five-dollar registration fee is going to be set specifically for the cost of administering the program. And that is, that's where I'm, I'm standing on it. I know you said we can take out of your property taxes to pay your five dollars. Um, but I could have a thousand other examples of, of saying, well, take my property taxes to pay for garbage trucks. Take our property taxes to pur- for the, the raises of the police department and the fire department. Which we had to pass, it looked public tax, uh, that raised four-point-three million dollars that we currently use to pay. Those raises for the police and fire.
I, I, and I agree.
And, and here's. I mean, I, I can't argue with that, that, that is where my stance is. So I'll listen to you, continue on, but that's where I'm at.
That's fine. I, I understand.
And, and I understand that, that, that's happens in, in city government, uh, that happens in state government, that happens in federal government. There are a lot of things you don't agree with. And that, and that concludes the meeting for tonight.
One last thing, and let's remember. Rental properties pay double the assessment. Our taxes are double a single-family home that is identical to that rental property. We already do pay higher taxes. We don't get more services. We get complaints that these are nineteen-hundred landlords in town and they have too much garbage. That's what we get for paying double tax.
Thank you. And that, uh, adjourns the meeting for tonight. And I gave you the plan of what's going to happen at tomorrow night's council meeting. That is going to be tabled and definitely to look at some of the language, um, that was brought up. In the ordinance, so. I don't know if you plan to come to the council meeting tomorrow night or here be, uh, table this thing indefinitely. Have a good night.